It's 5:00 on Monday, October the 4th. We want to welcome everyone to the city council meeting today. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if you would all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Deb.
Harley. Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum this afternoon. Entertain the motion then to approve the agenda, item number four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk this afternoon, I'd like to just thank Kylie Scow to being our videographer. And it was nice to see a successful Band Day last Saturday. We had good participation at the 20 to 2000 run. A nice parade, a lot of people there and good entries. And the evening band competition is always exciting and entertaining. So that was good to see that as well. The weather certainly cooperated, which always helps Band Day. So thanks, everyone who was able to participate and also thanks to those who made it happen. Appreciate that. Just a reminder also that the Candidates Forum is tomorrow evening at 7:00 and it's out at the college. And you can be there in person or listen on KOGA. And then evidently on Saturday evening, I saw in the paper, Saturday evening on October the 9th at 7:00, there's a family film being shown on the new digital scoreboard out at the Algonah High School. So you can either sit in the grandstand or bring the lawn chair. So that's something kind of new and exciting with the new turf out there, able to do that. And then I'd like to call Chief Bo Miller up to the microphone and I think he has some information he'd like to share with us.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I was just gonna quick talk to you guys a little bit. Last week, we did interviews in-house for the Assistant Chief position and brought in a board, did interviews with three candidates. And when that was all said and done, Mark Baca was promoted. I was just gonna just talk a little bit about Mark. He came here in early 2000 with his family. He worked for Smithfield at that point. And they actually, when they transferred him, they actually offered after two years to transfer him away. And his wife and they decided, they enjoyed it so much here, they decided to stay. Since he was from Illinois. They enjoyed it so much here. He had had a couple of jobs. 2007, he joined our Police Department Reserves and really enjoyed doing that. Then he got into corrections, worked at the prison for seven years. And then in 2013, he joined our force. And since he's been on, been very active for us, done a great job. He has took over sex crimes, has done all investigations on that. He is an ICAC, involved with ICAC. So he's involved with cases throughout the Midwest and he helps with that kind of stuff. He's a part of our pick-up fences program. He's led that. And that's really helped, that helps give education to the schools. They go in and talk with the students when they're freshmen, when they're seniors. They do classes on that, just to help get education. He's been very active in a lot of that stuff. He's a member of our SART team, which is a Sex Assault Response Team and just does also other basic investigations for us. So we're really happy to have him promoted. I think we're gonna have a great team working, moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are all aware of who he is. He is not, I was hoping to have him, but he is actually, he's up fishing. He took, he went on vacation right away. Like, I, you know. He hadn't been in for a long time. So, no, I'm excited when he gets back. He officially went into that position on Sunday. So he's officially in that position now. So, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys all know about it.
Thanks, Bo.
Thank you, Bo. Yes, and we're happy that Mark was chosen as well. And we know that there'll be a good team up there, chief and assistant chief. And then also, our city administrator Jacob tonight is online with us, on the conference phone. So we'll be hearing from Jacob that way rather than being in person. He's at a conference tonight. So we'll move into you, Jacob, an update from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. On that note, with Assistant Chief's promotion, we are hiring a new patrol officer to fill that position for that job that's posted. And we're seeking applications for that. I believe for review is October 15th. And also with public safety, I think, Mayor currently cut the application for our full-time paramedic. Just one with, I'm a part of the public, so those two opportunities to join Algonah's Public Safety Team. A few announcements regarding streets. North Main Street project construction is complete and the street opened here about a week and a half ago. The middle and overlay project, the number of the blocks on the eastern half have been completed now. The blocks where we still have work going underway, if you live on that block, you're certainly aware of it. We'll be looking to have the billing starting here, middle of this week. And the overlay street work the week after. So those projects could be wrapped up here in the next two weeks. And then on Moore Street, the project subcontractor moved on site last week and began final prep work and will begin concrete work this week. At this time, we are anticipating that the McGregor Street intersection will be able to open back for food traffic on the week of October 18th. So as we get closer to that date, we'll make an announcement once we have a firm open date. But in the interim, we have designated areas on Nebraska as well as Jones. There's no parking areas, no any semi or wagon theme halls. It'll take a wide termy track there. So hopefully those will accommodate here these next few weeks with harvest. We know that the busy route, but we'll hopefully have that street open here the week of October 18th. And that is all I have at this time. Was there any questions?
Any questions for Jacob? Okay, thank you, Jacob. We'll move into Agenda Item Number 7, which is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on tonight's agenda. I see no one here in the council chambers that would like to speak. Is there anyone on the phone? Deb? None there, it's either. So, okay. So we'll move to Agenda Item Number 8. That's the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from our last council meeting, September the 20th, approving the bills that are to be made this cycle and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney and a second from Brad.
Don.
Don, okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Agenda Item Number 9, in new business. This is the third reading of an ordinance involving parking during a snow emergency. Jacob?
This ordinance changes two items regarding the parking during a snow emergency. One, it changes the official declaration for a snow ordinance. Two, notice being sent on alert Iowa notification system. And then the second, which is the most consequential, is it does make, changes to parking in municipal lots during a snow emergency by designating side A and side B and having parking rotate days between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So that would just be the overnight hours. It would not impact parking during the day of regular business hours. So a side A and side B, it's designated as a downtown parking lot, which is demarked. And then on the first day of the snow event, when the emergency is declared, persons are supposed to park on side A, allow for all the snowers to move on one side. Following day rotate, we think will lead to more effective and efficient and safer with snow removal in our downtown lot. And so if this is approved, we will have signs showing up, designating the sides. When we've done, we've also talked internally about having flip signs or some indicator that when you're dragging the parking lot, it does show, display what side you're supposed to park on that day to help communicate with the public on which day it affects. So this is the third reading of the ordinance.
Also along with that, I am sending a letter to all businesses downtown, landlords, et cetera, explaining the program and offering them to come to a meeting probably in November so we can explain the program to them, so everybody's on board with what's going on.
Good, okay. Thank you, Barb.
And we haven't had any comments through the first two readings, right? I'd make a motion that we waive the third reading, then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the third reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve third reading.
We have a motion and a second then to approve this third reading of the parking during a snow emergency. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried.
We can move to adopt now, can't we?
Yes.
Yes, so then move to adopt the ordinance amending the city code chapter for parking in snow emergency.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 10 is a resolution involving the ambulance purchase. Jacob?
Yeah, this is for Algonah EMS for an ambulance purchase in the current discipline that we have budgeted. They requested proposals from five manufacturers. Two declined to submit a bid. One vendor did not respond. And then two vendors submitted bids. The lowest bid seen from field fire in the amount of $205,691. We had $185,000 budgeted in the EMS budget for this fiscal year. So obviously that came in over. So the, I know the still out there to talk. And the EMS Association has expressed interest in donating towards the power load cut or cop. That would be part of this. And then as well as, we're looking at doing some other smaller grants and maybe some fundraising opportunities as well to make up that difference. But we, you know, already, last year we deferred an ambulance purchase because of financial situation. So we were really like, not to defer that again. So the recommendation would be to go ahead and approve the mix-up of bids from field fire for that month, which is probably about $95 for the ambulance purchase in 2022.
So Jacob, this is Jody. So just to clarify, the field fire one does not include that striker power load. So what you just said is we're gonna try to get a grant or the ambulance is gonna try to get a grant to purchase that. That's why we don't have it on that quote.
I think we could be, the last, into that question, yes, so the fire for that 205, that does not include the power load. So that would be something purchased separately. Includes the prep for the installation for the equipment, but not the actual equipment itself. So that's what we'd be looking to hopefully procure some, you know, other grants as well through that USDA loan grant program. If we did find a few of those up, we think we'd be able to come in, books on everything.
And Jacob, this ambulance would, delivery date is?
Right now, we're probably looking somewhere in the summer of 2022. Hopefully yet this fiscal year. But with how supply chain, how that stuff's going. Thank you for the exact guarantee. But when we, that would be, we would actually get it, yes, this fiscal year and make the payments.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think it probably makes a difference, but I noticed on top of the bid, it says 550, but everything else says 450, NF450. The resolution says NF450. But on top of the field fire bid, it does say proposal for one Ford F-550. But everything else says 450.
Do they make 550s?
Not that, yeah.
Not that I know of, but.
Yeah. So I don't know if that really makes a difference, because down below, he did put 450, you know, with the price. So I assume it's a 450.
Yeah.
It's a 550, 450, that, that 550 on the top field fire, that is evidence like this for a 450, which is stated in the kind of middle paragraph there.
I guess I'd make a motion then to approve the resolution accepting a field fire bid for the ambulance.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney and a second from Jody to accept this ambulance purchase amount. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 11 is a resolution pertaining to the airport hangar door replacement project. Jacob?
This is professional services agreement with Bolton Mank related to said project. The scope of services includes the project initiation, field data collection, preparation plans specification, all the bidding services and the construction management. The proposed contractor's lump sum fee of $15,000. As you recall, last council meeting, we approved a grant agreement with the DOT to fund this project up to 75% or $63,750.
So this falls into, basically, we're paying 25% of the 15,000? Are we paying all of that?
Did you hear that, Jacob?
It'll be up to the 15,000, that, the grant is just on the construction itself. It's the administrative services, I believe, are entirely just responsibility to be.
See, if we got a building, we gotta have a door.
Probably so.
Winter's coming.
Right.
Makes sense.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Don and a second from Brad. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 12 is a change order pertaining to the Key Industrial Park project. Jacob?
Yeah, when we did that project, we included ground cover for the entire area of the park. We since changed our recommendation for plan. So what this does is reduce the area to be seeded by the contractor. And to keep industrial park from 43 to 18 acres, basically just so it wouldn't result in those acres that have been actually platted. So with that, this is a change order would be a de-debt from the project in the amount of $19,820. The 26 approximately acres, which will be, are proposed to be change ordered out, those would be leased to the city for hay production, which will be addressed as Agenda Item Number 15 a little bit later on.
Move to approve the change order. It makes sense.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Tyler, a second, or by Don, second from Tyler. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 13, this is a pay application for the airport hangar extension project. Jacob?
This is pay application number two in the amount of $84,119.33. The balance included, to finish including retainage is $334,805.60. It includes the payoff for work completed as well as materials stored on site. Once the building materials arrive here in December, the contractor will be ready to go, to complete the project. But we're right now in a holding pattern with the material delay on that building.
Motion to approve pay application.
Second. We have a motion by Rodney, a second from Brad. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 14, this is a street closure request.
So, since you've spoken with the church, I'll just, if you wanna take this one on, since you're there.
Yeah, I'm here.
You wanna come up?
Yeah.
That way the camera will be able to hear you.
Yep. All right. The last few years, we've done the truck or treat that's put on by the Methodist Church and we kind of assisted just because of manpower. We come there, we help out. The closure would be on Nebraska Street from Harland over to Moore. And it used to be just that street, but then a couple of years ago, we had such a, such great attendance. We wanted to kind of spread it out a little bit too with the COVID, just with that going on. So what we'd like for a closure would be from Harland to Moore, all of that street. And then we cut off half that road. We put barricades in the half and then go up to, on Moore Street to the alley in front of the Methodist Church here on the west side. So that's what would be, so it'd be the full block of, from Harland to Moore and a half block of Moore Street right there. Does that make sense to you guys? Okay.
It's been a great event for years.
What's that?
It's been a great event for the last year.
It has been an awesome event. It's great for, we do it for our children and they absolutely love it. It's fast action, a lot of candy, short time, gone. So, yeah, if any questions for me about that.
My only question is, is there a backup plan in case Moore Street isn't open to the south? I mean.
No, we have not, we haven't discussed that at all.
Okay.
I mean, if they're talking 18th, that's two full leases. I have no doubt that that should be open. But I think if we need to, like, I mean, just right now, off the top of my head, possibly using the parking lot right there, because there's a whole parking lot if we needed to do that.
City parking.
But that might be a thought.
It's definitely something to think about, just, you never know with.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking off the top of my head, maybe we can save that year because of the road. If it isn't closed, maybe we look at that. But I can talk to Jacob about that. But yeah, that's a good thought there on that.
I just want it to go on, not halted by anything.
Yep, no, absolutely.
So, go ahead.
Main line paving on Moore Street is supposed to start tomorrow.
Okay.
That there should be no reason that we are still under a detour on Nebraska Street by Halloween unless we get three weeks of nothing but rain. Nebraska Street, or Moore Street, McGregor, I'm sorry, should be open by the middle of October at the very latest.
So, and also then Moore Street though, you were talking about, you were talking about going north on Moore Street.
Yep, north or more from Nebraska, half a block, up to the alley.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of wrap around, yeah.
Right.
But yeah, but if that's not open, she's thinking the detour, how are they gonna have to reroute the whole detour then?
Yeah, I don't want any rain either.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or snow.
And that means on the night of Halloween, just, I don't know if that was talked about, but on the 31st, that Sunday.
Thanks to the church and whoever puts that on, I'm sure it's a lot of work getting that all together.
Move to approve the street closure.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Tyler. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item 15, this is concerning farmland lease. Jacob?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier in the change order of the city, we had solicited bids to rent out for a crop through 2022, the 26.33 acre is the furthest east there. Barb, since you kind of love this process, you want to provide the overview and the recommendation?
Sure. We ran the ad that's attached to the agenda for three weeks. Seal bids closed on September 30th. They closed the business at City Hall. We received one bid and it was from the person named Whitmore. I don't have the bid open. And he bid $250 an acre, which I think is a very fair price. It was from Matt Birdie, excuse me.
Yep.
And we looked at just hay because of the, in case something comes up in 60 days.
Right.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the question.
Yeah.
Looking at only growing hay on that instead of other crops? Correct.
Yes, because if we have a business comes in that we need to cut into part of that acreage, it's a lot cheaper, it's a lot less, more of a loss, or a lot less of a loss for the farmer if it's in hay that we'd have to reimburse him for than if it's corn or soybeans.
Okay.
Yep.
I just kind of, so everybody was kind of aware of that, why we, we're just looking at hay.
Looking at hay, right, yep.
Motion to approve bid by Matt Birdie.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
That motion carried. Agenda Item Number 16, this is an ordinance amendment to refer to Planning and Zoning Commission. Jacob?
Yes, this is a referral only. One item that's come up in some of our more recent developments is in our light manufacturing. Currently, right now, there is no minimum side yard ordinance in LM District if it's a budding, non-residential. So this is just a referral to planning and zoning to investigate and make a recommendation if we'd want to change those side yards left back.
Okay.
Would this, would this affect existing businesses or only if someone new comes in and moves into that zone and wants to build a new, to new building?
It would only apply to new development and the existing on a, on a, on a ordinance change like this with step backs or grandfathered in.
Motion to refer to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Brad. Is there any other discussion? Hearing that, vote please, Deb.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion carried. And that will be referred then to planning and zoning. Agenda Item Number 17, this is second notification of vacancy and appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the remainder of Tony Ram's term. And this is just a notification for a future appointment. Agenda Item Number 18, this also is a second Uh, agenda item number eighteen, this also is a second notification of vacancy and future appointment. This is to the Airport Commission to fill the remainder of Pete Riggs' term. And again, this is a notification for a future appointment only. Agenda item number nineteen, this is a final notification of terms expiring and appointments to the Retail Revolving Loan Fund Committee. This is a mayoral appointment, and I have visited with Levi Traugr and Brad Hoover. And I would recommend that, uh, they be reappointed to this, uh, committee for their three-year terms.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney and a second from Don. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing that vote, please, Deb?
Brad?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Oh, Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
I forgot that.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And welcome back aboard, Brad. Agenda item number twenty, this is a final notification of vacancy and appointment to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Uh, and this is to fill the remainder of Nick Arnt's term, which expires August first of two thousand twenty-four. And this position is now eligible for appointment, and this is a council appointment.
I believe there was a name of a Harlan Richter? Yes, Harlan Richter. Yeah, that was interested? Yep. I recommend, or I move, we appoint Harlan Richter.
I'll second then.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, from Don, a second from Rodney. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb?
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Harlan, for wanting to fill that position. And then agenda item number twenty-one, this is the final item on our published agenda. This is a discussion on ordinance establishing a new sanitary sewer fee, fee. Jacob?
Uh, so as you recall, um, a few months ago, we had discussed, um, our sanitary sewer rates and that's the fact that we're going on right now looking at a scenario where we're going to have to increase revenue by fifty percent, um, over the next three years. Um, we're still, uh, just a little bit of kind of a status update. Uh, WHKS, who we, uh, did hire to perform a, uh, an in-depth rate analysis, um, for us and, uh, a rate study. Um, that is currently underway. We're hoping to have it here, um, you know, maybe early, uh, next calendar year. Um, but we had also talked about getting, uh, in the interim, while that is getting, uh, analysis is getting done, as we, we know we have increased rates by so much that we can at least start stair stepping, um, that in. So, want, wanted to touch base on where we're looking at for ordinance. The Streets and Sewer Committee, uh, met here, um, I believe it was in August, um, at our last meeting and reviewed, um, kind of what we, uh, ordinance scenarios. And we had looked at AMU and facing our infrastructure fee, um, similar to how AMU bases their infrastructure, uh, reinvestment fee of fifteen off meter size. Um, and the Streets and Sewer Committee had approved, uh, as you can see there on the, that handout, I had my, forgot not sharing my screen. If, uh, that handout, um, of the draft ordinance language that, uh, that's highlighted in yellow, that would closer the rates that the, uh, committee of approved recommending for, um, our sewer infrastructure fee based on the AMU, um, meter. Just kind of since we have that precedent, people are used to that billing structure. The language in blue there is an alternative. Um, this is based off of, um, our current classification on sanitary, um, sewer. We have two user classes defined, and they're residential, commercial, institutional, and then industrial. So we want to have those two, two base. Um, so in terms of next steps, and I guess it's kind of the FYI of this item, and then for discussion, um, is, you know, for the next council meeting here coming up, if we want to consider the first reading of, of one of these ordinances, we want to, uh, go ahead and, and move forward with the, uh, based on meter size fee rate or just, um, kind of a, 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 get a version there in blue that's just, you know, the two classifications that gets the fee in place. Um, but, you know, knowing that we're going, this is going to change once we, um, you know, get that rate study and what recommendations come out of that. We know we're going to be changing our, our formulas on our, our sewer rate type that, that at least, you know, are just the, to start collecting those revenues, so we have to borrow a lot. The reason, uh, the, you know, added that language of just kind of the form to ten based on our current classifications is if we just want to get that in there so we, like, people get used to that as a fee, um, as opposed to if we go to, you know, based on meter. Right now, we don't have anything like that in, on our, our sewer ordinance in terms of how we do the calculation. Um, except for, you know, like, sorry, I take that back, um, for our, our user fees. But if that's, that might be changing, you know, we don't really know until we get that rate analysis. I guess the question would be is if we want to move forward with kind of this, you know, much more, uh, many more levels of, you know, fees based on meter size that we may end up changing on the, once we get that rate analysis on how we want to do this. Or if we kind of stick with the more basic version, um, that, you know, is, uh, not setting, you know, any, anything too far out of our existing ordinance in terms of how we do user classifications. Um, and then adjust once we get that final study done. So just, um, and I, I apologize if you don't have the spreadsheet. Uh, but just for reference, um, and kind of comparing, you know, that the meter size, that five-eighths and three-fourths inch, that is ninety-one percent users. So, um, you know, we can have obviously a lot of subgroups, but some of those only have a couple in them. So, um, you know, if we're just kind of taxing them at the lump sum, the reality is, you know, ninety percent of the users are going to be at four dollars anyways. Um, so I've kind of rambled on, I think, enough. Uh, I'll just kind of open it up for a discussion reaction if I can for that.
Well, I'm on streets and sewers, so we talked about this quite a bit. Um, you know, we haven't had that fee before, kind of have to do that to, um, you know, other cities do it. Other cities probably our size. We probably need to do that to start, um, you know, putting up or gaining that money to pay for our sewer improvements going down the line. It's going to be an investment. It's not really just a city trying to tack on another fee to the citizens.
I think we talked about it quite, I mean, so people realize what I think they realize, and hopefully they do. We're talking what fifteen, sixteen million dollar project to redo our, our sewer, and that we've got to come up with the money to be able to do that. And we were required to do it by the DNR.
Right.
Right. For nutrient reduction that would go into the.
Do you know what type of revenue this is gonna, just these numbers, if you just went with the four and ten, do you know what type of revenue that's could generate here?
Jacob, do you?
I don't know if Jacob heard that.
Yeah, did you hear that, Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, just on the four and ten, that was general, and this is, um, we're probably looking at about, um, one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred. Um, for the, um, one highlighted in yellow with all the different levels, um, we'd be looking at, um, about a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, so that's about a ten, eleven percent, uh, difference. Um, but, you know, again, knowing that we're probably going to change the fee structure or, you know, our other fees, you know, multiple times here in the next couple of years, this at least kind of just starts the, that first step in the stair step.
What do you think we're going to have to get to for a fee structure to pay for this project in five years? I guess, what's the stair step look like for five years?
Um, let me find. So, right now, just based off our, uh, I, I actually, I, I don't have those, those with me that I would need. Give me a second. So if you go to the, um, annual, uh, nutrient reduction report, um, Deb, if you could pull that up on the screen, it's an attachment in the agenda.
See, I think it's at the bottom there.
The very last one.
All right.
All right, so if you scroll to the very, uh, bottom of that attachment.
It shows the justification.
They have an excerpt from our nutrient reduction strategy. Um, and there it talks about, um, the cost to construct major nutrient reduction. You know, we're looking at a monthly sewer bill increase of approx- approximately thirty-one to thirty-five dollars a month for a typical user. Um, you know, so that's based on twenty nineteen numbers, but, you know, so we're, this is, there's going to have to be a number of, of increases. At, at this, right now, this probably represents maybe about twenty percent of the projected revenue that we're going to need to be at in terms of additional income within three years.
Okay.
But how we come down on that in terms of if it's, we've got more based on, you know, user by, you know, actual, um, usage? If we have more based just on fixed costs, if we end up changing, um, you know, based on consumption, different levels, or if we charge by pollutant type. Um, so there's a lot of variables of how we, how we get there. Kind of having an infrastructure fee is going to be one of several of the, the ways we get there.
Is there any guidance there you want to give, Jacob, and any thoughts?
Well, I, you know, I put this ordinance together, I, except for the blue section, that was a surprise. But I would really recommend, even though it's going to be a bigger hit to our two biggest industries, Snap-on and Harmel, that we go with the stuff in the yellow because the size of your meter means you're a heavier water user, meaning you're a heavier sewer user, and you need to pay your share of the cost. Uh, that's what I would recommend. It, I, it's hard to justify to a resident that's paying four dollars for their five-eighths inch meter that Snap-on and Harmel are using a six-inch meter and only paying six dollars a month more.
In terms of that one fee, and, and that was the, the rate structure that the, um, Streets and Sewer can be recommended as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, unfortunately, and at the end of the day, the total price of the new sewer plant, it's, it's kind of a pay me now or pay me later type thing, and I hate that term, but if you start paying a little more now, you're going to, the rates at the end are going to be lower in proportion to what they're going to be if we do a small adjustment right now.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I think we felt ninety-one percent of our users, you know, at that four-dollar rate, it's a little stair step to start realizing, and if we continue to, as we'll have to continue talking about this project, you know, with the meet the timelines. I think we'll continue to educate the public, and hopefully they'll understand, and, um, regardless, we're going to have to do something with our sewer, not, not just because of the DNR. It's, it's aged. It's, it's well past its life expectancy. So, uh, this is one of the reasons we, we have to also, but.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, we, tonight, we're just asking them to move forward probably with what the yellow is.
Yeah.
You know, for the resolution.
Yeah, I agree.
Just a discussion tonight?
Right.
Yeah, just a discussion tonight.
So I guess Jacob or Barb, would you just send us any?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear all that. Could you provide a brief summary?
Yeah, they were just recommending, uh, section B there in the, in the yellow. Just, we were just talking about what, what needs to be done, uh, you know. So, but Tyler's got a question.
I, I was just wondering if you could, if you were talking about, you had a different spreadsheet. Can you just send us any, any information you have so we can look at it or, or before we move forward with anything?
Could you piece that?
Oh, yeah, do you, do you have a spreadsheet or some more information I'm sure that you'll share with us before the next meeting pertaining to this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we can, we can, uh, put together some, some of the scenarios. But should, should we prepare, I guess, for the ordinance, should we prepare the version with the, uh, uh, yellow highlights for, for consideration?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I think that's what, yeah, everyone's in agreement to that for you to pursue that area, that route that Barb recommended.
All righty.
Okay. Is there anything else, uh, pertaining to that, either Jacob or Barb? Agenda item number twenty-one?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. You good, Jacob?
I'm good.
Okay. Well, it's five forty-four, and I would entertain a motion then to adjourn today's city council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned, so thank you very much.